Good evening and welcome to the Central Unified School Board meeting for June 14, 2022. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:03. Mr. Paul will not be attending and Mr. Deep will be calling in online probably during a closed session. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve from Mr. Cervantes. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Brooks. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nays? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Comments from the public on closed session items. Ms. Brooks, do we have anyone? No. Is there any calls holding online?
We have no comments by phone at this time. Would you like me to set 30 seconds?
Yes, sir, please.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll be adjourning the meeting into closed session.
All righty, I'll be calling the meeting back into order at 7:05. Ms. Davis, would you like to report out?
Thank you, yes. Trustee Chan arrived at 6:09 PM, Ms. Lopez, and then on E2, Trustees Correa made the motion, trustee Cervantes second, motion passed 6-0 with one absent. And on E3, trustee Cervantes made the motion, trustee Brooks made the second, and that passed as well 6-0 with one absent.
President Solis, can we also, Ms. Lopez, trustee Chan is on phone at this time.
Thank you.
Moving on, Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is item H, presentation reports. First item is H1, student recognition, boys volleyball and track and field.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, and thank you President Solis and Board of Trustees. This evening, we are proud to recognize the accomplishments of our student athletes and coaches in both boys volleyball and track and field. Here this evening with us is Athletic Director at Central East High School, Mr. Ray Hightower, to share a little bit about both teams' outstanding accomplishments this season.
All right, good evening, everyone. First, we have boys volleyball. The boys volleyball team competed this year, had an incredible season. Last year, they finished 0-17, but worked really, really hard over the summer and brought home our first section championship in school history. The boys volleyball team is led by head coach Darren Williams. They finished with an overall record of 18 and 14. Five other players will compete in the city-county All-Star Game. That is right. First section championship in school history. Our next team we want to recognize, as the boys volleyball program take their seat, is our track and field program, led by our head coaches Gary Davis and Cedric Poelium. Boys and girls, go ahead and come on up. Our girls team, they finished second in league, third in divisional, and third in the section. We had several state qualifiers. Our boys won Central East High School's first state championship, led by... The first state championship led by Jeremiah Walker, Cameron, who ran the 200-meter and the 100-meter, and our 4x100 team Jeremiah, Cameron, Imari, and Elijah, as well as Jeremiah, Cameron, and Imari, and Jerome Brown, who placed second. So, great job, guys. They brought home our first state championship.
All righty, before we move on with the agenda, Mr. Paul has joined us via Zoom. So, Ms. Lopez, can you call item two?
Next item on the agenda is item two, employee recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Thank you, President Solis and Board of Trustees. This evening, we have the honor and privilege of recognizing some exemplary employees who have been nominated by their colleagues for their outstanding services for the 21-22 school year. Please allow me a few moments to share a little bit about their accomplishments. Secretary Receptionist at Class Bailey Rowden, classified Rookie of the Year. Round of applause. Bailey was nominated by staff at Class, who shared that Bailey is a rock star. Bailey joined their team in August and immediately made a positive impact. Congratulations, Bailey. Certificated Substitute Rookie of the Year, Angela Ibarra. Angela, the round of applause. Angela was nominated by staff at Teague Elementary School, who shared that Angela never hesitates to support students and staff. Congratulations, Angela. Certificated Rookie of the Year, Hannah Brooks, Special Education Teacher, Herndon Barstow. Hannah was nominated by staff at Herndon Barstow, who shared that Hannah is a true definition of selflessness. She is organized and always keeps students at the center of everything she does. Congratulations, Hannah. Mentor Teacher of the Year, Wainima Campbell, English teacher at Central High School. Wainima has been nominated by her mentee teacher at Central High School, who shared that over the past few years, Wainima has worked tirelessly to ensure... Wainima has worked tirelessly to ensure that they are always provided the support they need to be successful in the classroom. Last but not least, the Association of Mexican-American Educators. This year's Educator of the Year is our very own Eddie Rodriguez. Please allow me to read a few moments about Eddie. Central Unified School District's Community Liaison, Eddie Rodriguez, is honored to be this year's Educator of the Year on May 6th at the annual awards banquet hosted by the Association of Mexican-American Educators. He was nominated for this award by Peer Coordinator Nora Sabios, Parent Involvement Coordinator, and Armida Espinoza, former Central employee. Mr. Rodriguez has served as a bilingual liaison for Central Unified for five years. Eddie is consistently going above and beyond his duties and has amazing and positive impact to provide students resources, teachers, and parents to see him. Congratulations to Eddie. Thank you.
Item?
Next item on the agenda is Employee Association Highlights. 3A is Central Unified Teachers Association, CUD.
Good evening, Board Trustees and superintendents. We actually don't have much to report tonight. Just wanted to just say that it has been a very challenging, but a very positive school year, if that's possible, because we did see tremendous growth with our students, thanks to all of our educators. And for that, we are grateful and thank you for what you do. I will be reporting out a little later tonight under M1 information items. So, thank you.
Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is 3B, California School Employees Association, CSEA.
Do we have Angie on the phone? No? Is she on the phone?
No. We don't have Angie on the line.
Alright, then thank you. We'll just table this. Can you call the next item, I?
Next item on the agenda is item I, Superintendent Board Communications.
Thank you. I've got a few things for you. It was too late for us to add to this part of the event, but I do also want to share with you, we had another incredible employee recognized. CASWA's 2022 San Joaquin Section Service Award was just given to our lead nurse, Levon English. CASWA is the California Association of Supervisors of Child Welfare and Attendance. To say this was well-deserved was an understatement. If you know Levon, she's been a school nurse for us for 25 years. Beginning of the pandemic, she stepped in as lead and for the last two years has done incredible work alongside an amazing team of health services staff. We want to acknowledge that this recognition is not only well-deserved, but pretty incredible. And if you stopped by her office, she was awarded a very large print with a quote on it about her service towards others. So, congratulations to Levon. And while we're clapping, I know we just got to recognize two teams, but I would be remiss if I also didn't also point out that Central East High School's baseball and softball teams represented us in the state playoffs. And though they didn't win, they had a great season until the end and traveled the state of California to compete against some incredible teams. So, congratulations to both of their teams as well. Summer school started. We ended the year on Thursday and started training for summer school on Friday and opened it up. Administrator Jeff Garrett has been leading the team of teachers and support staff to get all of the students into their appropriate classes and started to go. We have a couple of new pieces to summer school this year. The K5 has a special focus on support for English learners and also for students with IEPs, and also a new parent engagement component. Each week, the families will receive a book. If you want to read, I happen to like children's literature. But Alma is a book about how Alma got her name. She happens to have, I think, five or six names as part of hers, but it's all about your family and heritage and why you were named what your name. And then the second book, that the families will have all sorts of activities each week to do with with their children is the Little Red Riding, it's pencil, so you know, you get the take on Little Red Riding Hood. And all about writing and your voice as a writer. And so, this parent engagement component will be held weekly for families to join in and get tips and tricks for how to keep reading alive throughout the summer with their students and support their students through program. We also have an extended day enrichment program this year that we haven't had in the past, where students can stay beyond the summer school portion of it and participate in a lot of different STEM enrichment activities. We also are doing the high school credit recovery and original credit offerings and working really hard right now to respond to some late registrants and trying to get kids matched with the classes that they are desiring. And want to take a moment to make sure our community knows, and you as well, in case you get questions, that we are doing our summer food. We just, I see Alyssa here, they've got it arranged and have advertised any child between 1 to 18. We are providing food at Central East, Teague, and Biola Cafeterias daily for children. So, please take advantage of that. And then last but not least, thank you to each of you trustees for participating in support of our class of 2022. We finished, I think, being together for five or six days together for all of the events. They were incredible. A few facts about the class of 22 shared by their school principals. Class graduated 88 of 116 of their students, that's 76% and up from last year by almost 25% from that last year. So, congratulations. Yes, please clap for them. Pershing and Pathway, 48 of their seniors out of 66, 73%, also up 27% from last year for them. So, congratulations to them. Central Online Homeschool, I don't have their prior year yet, but 44 of their 48 students were able to graduate, and we enjoyed that. That's 92% of their students. And then I'll do the next two, and then we can do a big round of applause, I hope, because I think you'll be excited to know Central High School. That ceremony was large. 209 students of 217 participated in the first return to Central High School's own graduation ceremony. That's 96%. That's up 6% from last year. So, great for them. And then Central East was our longest evening. 664 students out of 691, also 96% and up 6. And each of these schools have already identified all of the students that are in summer program right now that we'll be adding to this list at the end of summer graduation. So, congratulations to all of them. We have definitely increased in our graduation and I know it was a lot of hard work to get there.
Is there any communication from the board? Hearing none. Moving on to communication from the public. Item J. Ms. Brooks, do you have anyone? Nobody in the auditorium wants to speak, huh? Okay. Are there any calls holding?
Yes, we do. Board, how much time are we providing for public comment?
Minute and 30 seconds. Sir, if you wish to talk, can you fill out a slip and give it to Ms. Brooks?
President Solis?
Yes.
Can we just clarify that this is for items that are not on the agenda? Perhaps?
This is going to be for items not on the agenda. We have some people getting some forms now.
Would you like me to send the first caller?
Yeah, go ahead and do the online calls.
The first caller is parent Gabriel Suarez, along with his family.
Alrighty. Sir, you're on the line.
Give me a moment. I'm waiting for the call to be transferred over. Hello there. You're on with the board. You have a minute 30 to make your comment. Make sure to turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear. Again, a minute 30, and your time starts now.
Richard Solis, if you cared about kids, then you would not have taken Malachi's project away to give to a bogus committee. Malachi won the Gate Community Service Project, and he was supposed to have received a $1,000 grant. Keddie Davis stole that money from him, and he was only allowed to hang up one poster at his school. On the day that he was supposed to share his project, his teacher and principal said he was being inappropriate and offensive. But when Gina Sellers and Monica Mesa tore his poster down and bragged about it on social media, you gave them leadership of the renaming committee. That proves that you're not about kids, but about sanctioning racist bullies. At the community input session, Central Unified students were told to go back to their country and made fun of for wearing turbans by outside agitators. Now you want to give a win to racist adults who bully children. You say you understand their side. They feel that history is being erased when it isn't. They say it will cost too much when it won't. They say it's a tradition when you know it's a disgusting racist tradition. By giving adults who bully children a win, you're giving all children at Central Unified a loss. Kids call my son a liar for saying that Polk was a racist slave owner. They tell him that his brother's project needs to stop because it's going to ruin cheerleading. And they tell him to go to another school if he doesn't like being a white supremacist pioneer. You want these children to suffer through 15 more years of white supremacist praise with your moratorium? Roosevelt was a white supremacist. Madison and the pioneers were too. McKinley colonized people of color, and you want to keep celebrating that to give racist bullies a win? Richard and Keddie, you only care about pleasing racists, and the community should know that. I yield my time to give to my wife.
This is Crystal Cabrera, and I would like my one minute and a half. Is the clock set?
Yes, it is. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of points to make. First, I think that the committee is a lie. It was unnecessary. You all already knew about Polk and the rest of them, especially Polk. You already knew that he was a racist. There is no need to go and study it more because the facts were not ever disputed. And also, I think it's problematic, very problematic, that Monica Mesa led the committee and that she did not allow for any disagreement. I witnessed it myself. Every time that my husband Gabriel would try to speak or another committee member, Michael, would try to speak, they would be instantly shushed and called to order anytime they disagreed. I also witnessed it at the last input session. It was online on YouTube. And as soon as she felt that the conversation was not going favorably to her, she did not want to hear from the public anymore. She tried to end public comments early. Second point, I think that the 15-year moratorium that Mr. Solis suggested is unfair. I don't think that it was the job of the committee to impose a moratorium. I think it was the job of the committee to study school names. He threw it in at the last minute after Gabriel had been ejected from the meeting for disagreeing. And I don't think that the board, the Central Unified School Board, should consider the moratorium. I also don't think that the Central Unified Board should consider the suggestion by Melissa, can't remember her last name, that there should be no activists. Because activists are heroes for people of color. And that also was thrown in at the last minute.
Your time is up.
Okay, well, I have one more thing to say. I think that if, I think Malachi deserves a special award, and if the name is changed, he should be allowed to cut the ribbon. It was him that sparked this change. And I don't think that the school board should take that away from him. And you guys should stop acting like he has nothing to do with it. It was him, and he deserves recognition for it. Here's my son, Malachi, who wants to speak next.
I want my time.
Go ahead.
Richard Solis, you stole my Gate Community Service Project from me the same way that Keddie Davis stole the $1,000 that I won with my project to change the name and mascot of my school and all the other racist names and mascots in the district. When I tried to share my project with my class to inform them of how much racist Polk and the pioneers were, my teacher said I was being inappropriate and offensive. I got in trouble for telling the truth and doing my work. But when Gina Sellers and Monica Mesa tore my poster down, they got rewarded for bragging about it on Facebook. They hate the truth. You gave them a committee that never needed to be and didn't include me on the committee, even though it was created because of me. You shouldn't need a committee to tell you that celebrating racist is wrong. You don't want to change a racist mascot that committed genocide and stole land from people like me. Pioneers never wanted to build a community together. They just wanted to steal and kill. The other school names shouldn't be changed too, because they're racist. That 15-year moratorium is a disgusting joke. You only care about pleasing white supremacists, so stop saying that you care about children, because that is a lie. My brother wants to speak next.
Go ahead and reset.
Give him my time, please.
Go ahead.
The committee was created because of Malachi's project. It has been over a year since he told since he told you that the inappropriate school names and mascots need to change. I feel disgusted to be called a pioneer because they killed people like me and they enslaved people. They want to steal land. They did not want to live in peace with people like me. It would be like someone coming to your house and saying that they want your house and that you need to leave, or else we will kill you. It is disgusting to celebrate people like that. Theodore Roosevelt was a white supremacist. James Madison owned slaves and said that a slave should count as three-fifths of a person. And William McKinley colonized different countries. Your committee said that these things should mean that they should not be celebrated with school names. Monica Mesa would not let my dad talk at the meetings. She is a bully who tore my brother's poster down with Gina Sellers. Both of those bullies were on the committee. My brother wasn't even, no, this is his project. Ms. Guyagos, aka Ms. Shmenti, said that Malachi was being inappropriate and offensive for telling the truth. Central Unified, you lied to my brother, and you lied to those bully children. Kids at school call me a liar for saying that Polk was a racist who owned slaves. Someone said that Malachi's project needs to stop because it's going to ruin cheerleading. And another kid said that I should go to another school if I don't like the name. That is disgusting.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. Is there any other calls holding?
Yes, we have another. We have Committee to Study School Names and Mascots Member, Michael Kurnasoff. Hello, you're on with the board. You have a minute 30 to make your comment. Please make sure to turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear. Again, a minute 30, and your time starts now.
Hello, this is Michael Kurnasoff Jr. I'm on the renaming committee. And I've noticed with this renaming committee and the board, I've noticed a nepotism toward normalized white supremacist narrative of a romanticized version of Yerba's history in regards to Polk's manifest destiny, which holds an ideology of superiority based on race, which simply put is racism in a normalized fashion. I've witnessed several board members vote in favor of putting one of two parents, Monica Mesa, who ripped down Malachi's project as the renaming committee chair in addition to supporting removal of Malachi's father from the last meeting, which no one spoke of to keep Gabriel in the meeting or even vote to bring him back. Further, Malachi didn't receive his $1,000 award. It was taken away and given to other students as retaliation for a truth-seeking project on Polk. Malachi didn't get to finish presenting his project. This renaming committee doesn't even consider Malachi's research on Maria Moreno, the first hired female farm labor union rep here in Fresno in an era when dominated by men. The committee seems to be ran by Richard Solis. When Solis interjects, the mixed requests that are promptly complied with, but when Malachi's father brings up significant issues, he is told point of order. He is told, oh, he's off topic. And in the last meeting, he was wrongly kicked out of the Zoom meeting. Is embracing bullies the narrative of this district this board and this committee wants to put out? It seems to be going in that direction. Malachi needs to be able to complete his project as originally intended with presentations to each school on his research on Polk and Maria Moreno and his $1,000 award needs to be dispersed as originally planned and expected. And this entire district board committee needs training from Dr. Joy DeGrupe, the author of Posttraumatic Slay Syndrome, and spearheading a new era, a new direction in psychology. I end my time.
Thank you. Next caller.
That concludes public comment.
Ms. Brooks, do you have something?
Next, we have Robert, Dr. Robert Mitchell.
Good evening. And before my time starts, let me just explain. I'm going to jump around here. I am going to submit the letter so you would have everything. So, what I say may not seem in order because I'm trying to So what I say may not seem in order because I'm trying to, I'm gonna try to get everything in in a minute and thirty seconds, but I'll submit a letter, and if it seems disjointed, you'll have the letter, okay? Okay. Good afternoon, early evening, board and board president, trustees. My name is Robert Mitchell. I'm a graduate of Central Union High School, class of eighty-three, BSU president, Central High School varsity basketball captain, and took home the Central High School Leadership Award my senior year. So I'm here to speak about a possible partnership. I am president of the Chapter of United Negro College Fund. I also sit on the Western Regional Board. Earlier, before COVID, UNCF was able to support Central High School students Ethan Baird and Jayla Green with collegiate scholarships. And that was in conjunction with the United Negro College Fund and the NFLPA, National Football League Players Association. While the financial aspect of college is important, many of our students also need to be exposed to world history so that they have proper footing, empowerment, and foundation from which to compete scholastically, experiencing and walking in the step with history. I'm hoping Central Unified partners with UNCF, and we could possibly work together to support an initiative about an education about the Calvary Soldiers up in Yosemite. And we have a student here that wants to speak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Israel Griffin, and I'm an incoming freshman at Central High School. I believe that experiencing events or being aware of the world around you will lead to strong fundamentals toward education and responses or reactions to anything that comes your way academically or mentally. I believe that the Buffalo Soldiers Program will help me achieve these goals.
Ms. Davis, do we have any other? Nope. Are there anyone else holding on the phone, sir?
If anyone could pass on my information, I heard the name Jeff Garrett. I have a connection with that family, so.
He's right there behind you.
Stand up, Jeff. Thank you. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is Item K, Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Board, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Creo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cervantes. Discussion on the motion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A roll call vote. Sorry. Ms. Lopez.
Just to confirm, Superintendent Davis, we have Trustee Paul or, and Trustee Chan on the line?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
President Solis?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Can you call the next item, please?
Moving on to action items. First item on the agenda is L1, Student Discipline, Case Number Twenty-One dash twenty-two dash zero twenty-four, Case Number Twenty-One dash twenty-two dash zero twenty-five.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Creo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cervantes. Ms. Lopez, can you call a roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul? Motion carries six-zero with Mr. Paul abstaining.
Thank you. Can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is L2, Accept Gifts to District, Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So recently, the Child Nutrition Department received a donation of five hundred dollars from No Kid Hungry for its staff appreciation luncheon. Justin Garza High School also received a donation for five hundred dollars from Robert de George for the ASB Fund. And lastly, the Maintenance Operations and Transportation Department received the following donations for the Classified Staff Appreciation Week Luncheon. A thousand dollars from Altech Industries, eighteen hundred and eighty-five dollars from Home Depot Pro, and five hundred dollars from Line X of Clovis. We want to thank our generous donors, and I'm recommending at this time that the board accept the gifts to the district.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Ms. Creo made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayling is the second. Ms. Lopez, can you please call a roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. President Solis?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is L3, Discuss and Approve Assistant Superintendent Educational Services Job Description, Mr. Collegian.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Thank you, Board of Trustees. This item returns to the school board from our previous, our previous meeting. I want to thank board members for providing input to make revisions and changes to the current job description for the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. With one minor edit, we are going to recommend approval of this item, and I think Ms. Lopez also provided you a hard copy of the revisions that were made. Reference item number twenty-seven, please, where it reads "work with parents," and then there's in quotation, it says "legal guardians." It should read, and we'll make the adjustment in the motion, that "work with parents and legal guardians," and we'll actually drop the quotations there and then just finish the sentence. Again, thank you for your input. Administration is recommending approval of this job description.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none.
I'll move to approve the job description with the amendments to number twenty-seven.
Thank you, Ms. Creo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cervantes. Ms. Lopez, can you call a roll call vote?
We lost Mr. Paul due to connectivity issues.
Yes.
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
President Solis?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is L4, Hold a Public Hearing Regarding Contract Openers for Labor Negotiations Between Central Unified School District (CUSD) and Central Unified Teachers Association (CUTA), Chapter 961, Mr. Collegian.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Again, thank you, Board of Trustees. This item too returns to the board from our previous board meeting. Administration is recommending that at this time we hold a public hearing and then subsequently take action to approve the article openers for negotiations with CUTA. Thank you and happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and open the public session, public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Do we have any calls holding?
We have no calls at the moment.
Can you give me a clock and start it, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Closing the public hearing now. Entertain a motion to approve the item. I have a motion by Mr. Cervantes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brooks. Ms. Lopez, can you call a roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
President Solis?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is L5, Adopt Resolution Number Twenty-One slash twenty-two dash fifty-two, Committed Fund Balance, Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So the board will recall at the last meeting, we discussed, beginning with the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, the district's reserve cap requires that a school district's adopted budget, which we're going to be talking about in a minute, pursuant to ED Code four-two-one-two-seven, shall not contain a combined assigned or unassigned ending balance of more than ten percent of total funds. And so a draft resolution was prepared and presented to the board at the last meeting. That was prior to putting the numbers together for our adopted budget. And so now that we have our adopted budget coming forward, we have updated the estimated amounts that are shown in the attached resolution to be committed for various purposes so that it's now aligned with the annual budget for next year that's being presented to the board. And if you recall, there are a number of items that are proposed for committing these fund balances. I'll direct the board's attention to the sender column in that table that's included in the resolution, which explains the rationale for each one of those. And again, this aligns to the annual budget. When we get to the end of next year, I anticipate that we will have a revision to align to the ending numbers at the end of the year. So administration is recommending at this time that the board adopt this resolution for committed fund balances, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Cervantes. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brooks. Ms. Lopez, can you please call a roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Corio?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
President Solis?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is Hold Public Hearing in the Twenty-Twenty-One, Twenty-Twenty-Four Local Control and Accountability Plan, ALCAP, Ms. Chrisby.
Good evening, board members, President Solis and Superintendent Davis. As promised at the last meeting, we are now at the point in our ALCAP timeline for our public hearing. I have a little bit of information to share with you before we do that. If you'll draw your attention to the slides. In Goal One, we wanted to make sure that we were calling attention to the input from our educational partners that was shared through various meetings, surveys, and committee, or sorry, the Thought Exchange Survey. They were very clear about the need to continue to provide academic supports, interventions, extended day, and to continue to help students that are struggling academically. You can see some highlighted items there. This goal is all about academic achievement and preparing kids for college, career, and community. You can still see our academic support tiers that begin in the classroom and then gradually become more refined and specialized according to student need. Anything in blue is additional staffing or services provided based on our educational partners' input and the needs analysis that the district conducted. Specifically, the articulation that Sixth Camp needed to be funded equitably. So that provision is in the site allocations as well as expanded services for our English learners and additional services, as you can see there, for students that are struggling. In Goal Two, we're all about preparing our students, cultivating equitable environments where they're participating and engaging. Again, educational partners were very clear that kids needed clear support mechanisms in order to be ready to graduate and engage in college. They wanted to continue the co-curricular activities. Behavioral support and social, emotional support continue to be big items mentioned by our stakeholder groups as well. You can see the addition there of a counselor for our online homeschool that continues to grow, and additional behavior supports in the tiers for our support for those kids, including psychologists, intervention counselors, and additional administrative support at the school sites. Goal Three is about our community outreach. We want to operate safe and inclusive schools in partnership with our community. That includes having facilities that are appealing and provide helpful areas for us to work and learn, making sure our family engagement and our community partners are feeling heard and part of the process, and including the access to technology, not just for our students and teachers, but also our community members. So that you'll see the community hubs that are in that action under Goal Three as well. We're happy to announce that we also heard from our educational partners loud and clear that our community liaisons are getting the job done, and so we will be adding another position to two of our larger schools, Harvest and Polk, and that community bilingual liaison will be a Punjabi speaker. So we're excited about that. The final slide just kind of culminates all the highlights of our three major goals with the actions that are going to be included in the twenty-two, twenty, or that are currently included in the draft, pending your approval and then our county's approval. And you'll also see attached in your packets the superintendent comments, and that is a process where our district English learner advisory committee, as well as our district advisory committee, which are Title I parents, and our migrant parent advisory committee, all, early in May, before it goes up for public comment, we reconvene the meetings and we show them the proposed draft, and they're allowed to ask any questions they want or comment on any items as they see fit. And as you can see, most of their comments this year were very happy. They felt heard, they felt seen and validated. And then Mrs. Davis is obligated to reply to those comments, so you'll see her comments or her reply to the comments also on that document, and that's posted on our webpage. Happy to answer any questions you have. Other than that, after public hearing, we would move this forward to the next board agenda item for action.
Thank you. Any questions or statements by the board? Ms. Creo?
I just want to thank all of our district staff, our educators, and our community. I think it's clear through this proposal and some of the additional jobs that we've been adding that there's a need and that we are focused on providing the educational services and mental health services that our students need. the educational services and mental health services that our students need. So, just thank you very much for listening. Thank you for speaking up and bringing this forward to us. So, thank you all very much for your hard work.
Any other questions or statements? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open this up for a public hearing. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak to this item in the auditorium? Ms. Brooks? Do we have any calls holding?
We have no comments at this time. Would you like me to set thirty seconds?
Yes, please.
Thirty seconds have passed, and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and place this on the consent agenda at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez, can you go ahead and call the next item?
The next item on the agenda is L seven, Hold Public Hearing for the Adoption of the 2022-2023 Proposed Budget. Mrs. Belladeras.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the 2223 Adopted Budget. You did receive your books, and just so you know, we are using Saks's. State had updated their software, so some of the lines and stuff, they're still working on the formatting, but that's what we're going to be using from now on. So, we begin our 2223 Adopted Budget with our general fund revenues, with the assumptions that we're using based on our demographic studies. Our local control funding formula, less our transfers to deferred maintenance, is one hundred and seventy-seven point seven million. Our federal, other, and local revenue, those just show the estimated award for that this current year. There is no carryover or deferred revenue in this budget. So, you will see it's a lot smaller, even the one-time monies for COVID. So, I'm sure everyone's thinking, where's that large number? That will be added at first interim. Here are some of the assumptions that were used when determining the budget revenue. We use the projected ADA of fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-seven point zero eight, and that is ninety-five percent of our district's estimated CBEDs for next year enrollment. Our estimated property taxes is based on this current year, and then the transfer out to deferred maintenance at this time. Federal revenue, again, there is no carryover or deferred revenue from prior year. That will be added once we close the books. This is just our basic federal revenue, Title I, and so forth. No COVID funds are in this, since these are one-time in natures. The same goes with the state. The rates for lottery and mandated block grants are right there. Those are projected from the School Services Dartboard. Other local are just usually the one, our grants. I'm trying to think. I've got my ROP and miscellaneous grants that we have that are ongoing, and that is consistent, our local revenue. The projected expenditures for the year, salary and benefits, as you can see, represents eighty-four percent of our district's general fund budget. And then, the next would be our books and, I'm sorry, our services and other outgoing. That would be like our contracts, police, anything in that nature, utilities, so forth. We do have a transfer out of the, yeah, I think that's wrong. We do have a transfer out of six point one million, and then our books and supplies of nine point three. Again, these numbers will change as we get into the year. Salaries and benefits were based on the current CBA. We had rolled positions in April, May, so we had included all the increases that happened this year. The STIRS increase for this coming year is two point eighteen percent. The PERS increase is expected to be two point four six percent. And we project a slight increase for workers' comp. Books and supplies, we did add some money in there above and beyond our lottery for textbooks and core curriculum. And then, all the other budgets, our restricted budgets, are usually balanced revenue to expenditures. So, again, that's why you will see these costs go up as soon as we increase with deferred and carryover. Services, we did, that's eighteen point seven million. Increase to maintenance and operations and other district-wide contracts and services, we did put a increase based on inflation. Increase to our property and liability insurance. And then, the same idea as far as expenditures, you can, or revenue for restricted. Capital outlay. Everything that we did was, we included any time, one-time expense. This also would include our ALSAALPA transportation bill back and any indirect costs that we billed the restricted grants. There is a slight, small transfer for campus connection and fee-based preschool, but that can change. Here are the multi-year assumptions that were used when developing this budget. As you can see, we're at a COLA at six point five six percent, and then the out years, five point three eight percent and four point oh two percent. And you see the different rates right there for the STIRS and CALPERS. Those are our largest increases. Here are multi-year projections. So, this next year, we show an ending fund balance of fifty-five point four million. The next year will stay about the same, fifty-six point seven million. And then, we increased just a tad in the third year for fifty-eight point five million. That's leaving us with a percent of total expenditures at twenty-five point eight eight percent. And that seems to stay steady through the three years. And right there, it also shows our committed funds as a whole, and then the reserve for economic uncertainties, plus the unassigned, unappropriated equals that ten percent requirement. This is just the, an overview of all of the general fund numbers put into the ALCAP based on their goals, ones, two, and three, broken out in those areas. And I believe that is it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If not, administration recommends that the board hold a public hearing and then place this item on the June twenty-eighth for action.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or statements by the board? Mr. Mayling?
Thank you. I've actually, I have got three questions I need clarification on. The first one is, in one of the line items under deferred maintenance, it said proceeds from lease, from leases. In twenty-two, we had seven point seven million, and that was completely cut this year. It's page three on deferred maintenance. And I was curious what those leases were that we no longer have.
Were you looking at the book or the PowerPoint? I'm sorry.
The book.
Okay. Are you looking at the General Fund tab, or are you looking?
No, under deferred maintenance.
The deferred maintenance tab.
Page, page three.
Just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
Yeah, I just need a little clarification on that.
And where are you looking? I'm sorry?
I think it was page three, under proceeds from leases.
So, you're looking at the current year?
Yes.
Yeah, so, what that was, was we received, I'm trying to think. We received, we took a loan, I believe. That was the loan for the, some work that needed to be done. So, the proceeds, we, so what we do is we book the full proceeds, and then we will make our annual payments from that. But we have to book the proceeds to show revenue coming in. Even, and then we have, then we have our expenditures, so we can do the work.
So, we have none of that for twenty?
Not at this time.
Okay.
That can change.
Okay. And then, thank you for that. And then, my second question is, on child development, the fund dropped in revenue. Does that have to do with ALCAP numbers? Or I don't completely understand why the, why our revenue has dropped.
So, that would be just an estimate that we used. And then, they had other, as you, if you can look on page two, you'll see in the current year, they had three hundred and nineteen thousand of all other state revenue. That wasn't, that was probably a one-time monies. I would have to check just to double, you know, to make sure. So, usually, we don't include that. We would just include the actual entitlement for child development.
Okay. I think I understand a little bit. And then, my final question is, under deferred maintenance again, capital outlay expenditures was cut out. And I noticed that on your, on your, on your presentation you did as well. Could you explain why we have no expenditures for any deferred maintenance?
So, what happens when we project if, I'm trying, if all the money in the current year, okay, is in the budget, there is no, there's not that much carryover. So, the carryover plus that one transfer, I believe, of one point four million, will be put into an estimated budget. The budget is, if we look on page, page four, you'll see that they have an ending fund balance of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand that was not budgeted for. Usually, what happens is when we start the year, facilities program will move the money, get their carryover, and then put it in the budget based on their projects that they need to use. I don't always just put it in there because I'm not sure how they're going to use it or where. It's just easier for them to move it from the bottom and up. So, you, like I said, you'll see a lot of these numbers change at first interim.
Okay. Is that something that we should probably have in there, so we have an idea of what we're going to spend on deferred maintenance? And potentially, a list of what we're going to fix?
I mean, yes. Usually, I don't include that because that's, that would come from another department. But I'm sure they do have a list of projects that they are working on, and as they, we need them.
Okay. Thanks, Yolanda. Thank you.
Any other questions or statements from the board? Mr. Cervantes?
Thank you, Board Chair. My, my question is pretty generalized, and it's not necessarily on the budget, but I'm just curious to see if at the federal or the state level, are they already starting to talk about releasing some additional emergency funds or additional funds for security systems in light of what happened at the last school district in Texas? Is there any talk about that? Obviously, it's going to require a lot of additional costs from school systems. Or is that money going to come from? And if, in fact, there is any buzzword at the state or federal level in this particular topic?
I'll take that question. We haven't seen anything in the state budget. It is very possible that we could see more down the road, but yeah, currently, nothing in the state budget. From time to time, there are federal grants that come into play related to safety, and so, we're, we're looking at those as they come available as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Carrillo?
If I can just add to your question, well, and respond to one of your questions, Trustee Cervantes. There are a number of legislative bills, at least at the state level, related to gun control and restrictions, and they include additional provisions that would add reporting requirements and restrictions for school districts. The bill language includes that they're supposed to then allocate funds, but I mean, as they pointed out, there's nothing really in the budget. So, that would be, we would hope that then they would consider that and provide some additional funding in order to allow school districts to comply with any additional requirements.
My point was, this being a budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm thinking that we need to start something, if there's something available. And we need to be at the, at the head of the topic, as opposed to behind the topic, in terms of being proactive. Thank you.
Any additional questions or statements from the board? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to a public hearing. Do we have any people wanting to talk in the room? Ms. Brooks, okay. Any calls holding?
Setting thirty seconds.
All righty, sir.
Thirty seconds have passed, and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you, sir. Closing the public hearing. What is the preference of the board? Would you like this to come back as a consent? I have one, yes.
Does it have to come back as action? I never remember.
It has to come back as?
I think it has to come back as action.
The ALCAP does not. We checked on that, but.
We'll just bring it back as an action, to be safe.
Thank you.
It's going to come back as action. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is L eight, Approve Universal PK Planning Grant. Mrs. Hernandez and Dr. Boatwright.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Davis. As shared in information in our previous board meeting, the UPK Planning and Implementation Grant that Central Unified has prepared with feedback from staff, the community, and administration will be ready for submission to the California Department of Education by June thirtieth. This grant provides an opportunity to expand services for more three- and four-year-old children. Most importantly, it increases foundational preparation in early literacy, language, math skills, executive functioning, and social-emotional development. The students who have this experience in early education are less likely to be identified for special education services or be held back in elementary school. The Universal PK Plan includes an alignment from preschool through third grade, which will create a seamless system supporting the needs of all students. Administration is recommending the board approve the UPK Planning and Implementation Grant.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Carrillo. Second by Mr. Cervantes. Ms. Lopez, can you do a real call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Carrillo?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes? Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
President Solis?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is Al nine, adopt resolution number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash fifty-six, authorizing an emergency contract without bidding, Mr. McLean and Ms. Engels.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Engel to come up to the front to join me in this item, which is an action item due to an emergency situation that we'll discuss here for a moment. And I will introduce the item, then Alyssa will be here to answer any questions. So Teague Elementary School, we have a walk-in freezer-cooler system, which is older, and Alyssa can tell you how old, but it is no longer functioning the way it should. And repairs are having to be made more frequently. And we need to make sure that it's functioning properly for our students. And so we have reached out to our different vendors, three vendors, to look at pricing in order to get this replaced on a timely basis. And so we, out of those three vendors, two came back with quotes. And fortunately, at this time, we had just received kitchen infrastructure training or kit funds from the state. So it's, it's good timing here. There's, there's money available. So we do have a quote now, and we believe that it is important to take action at this time to get this system replaced and going. And so we're recommending that the board adopt the attached resolution, which would authorize emergency contract without a formal bid in the interest of, of time to get these, to get this equipment replaced. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Creo?
Second, second.
And a second by Ms. Brooks. Ms. Lopez, can you please call a roll call vote?
Trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Creo?
Yes.
Trustee Cervantes? Trustee Chan?
Yes.
Trustee Mayling?
Yes.
President Solis?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you call the next item?
We move on to information items. First item is M one, receive information regarding addendum of the law enforcement service contract between Central Unified School District and Fresno Police Department, Mr. Collegian.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Thank you, Board of Trustees. When the current law enforcement contract was approved by the board in the summer of 2021, the board requested that administration bring this item back in the event that additional school resource officers were available for our, our middle schools. At this time, the Fresno Police Department is offering two additional resource officers to Central Unified Middle Schools. One for Glacier Point Middle School is the recommendation. And the second one would split time between El Capitan and Rio Vista Middle Schools. The two additional SROs will be paid for by the general fund. The additional addendum expenditures come to 333,000 dollars, just over 333,000 dollars. Please refer to the attachments for complete details regarding the existing contract that's attached to the board agenda in addition to the proposed addendum. Here with us this evening are representatives from the Fresno Police Department to help answer any questions the board may have regarding this item. Present here tonight are Deputy Police Chief, Mr. Michael Reed, Sergeant, SRO Sergeant, Mr. Anthony Alvarado, and of course, our resource officers here at Central Unified, Officer Sheila Chandler, Officer Todd Steinhardt, and Officer Richard Luhon. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium the Director of Human Resources, Mr. Alicia O'Quair, to briefly highlight some of the collaboration efforts between Central Unified and the Fresno Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Collegian.
Press it again on the bottom.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you to Mr. Collegian, and good evening to President Solis, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. During the 2021, 2022 school year, site administrators from Central East High School, Justin Garza High School, and Pershing Pathway Communication, Continuation Schools have worked closely with student resource officers and Sergeant Alvarado to promote a safe and secure learning environment for our students and staff members at each of these school sites. Now such efforts to promote a safe and secure learning environment include, but are not limited to, building trust and rapport with students through relational building efforts, connecting at-risk students to needed services, providing ongoing formal and informal counseling and mentoring services for students, instituting de-escalation and conflict resolution meetings between students, providing prevention and support strategies for students experiencing bullying, as well as those committing it, to providing character and resilience-building education program opportunities, such as the Fresno PAL Fight Girls Club, in which Officer Sheila Chandler actively recruited and supported forty-five Central Unified School District female secondary students to participate in, and providing opportunities for students to just simply connect with Central East High School Officer, SRO Rich Luhon's Coffee with Cops or Cookies with Cops. And also Officer Todd Steinhardt's efforts to re, to actively re-engage students from Pershing Pathway, which has led to a 50% decline in the number of misdemeanors, citations, or infractions at this site. Now with this positive role and impact our SROs have had with our high school students, we've also identified through various surveys, as well as data from Fresno PD, a need for additional SROs at our three middle schools. Such surveys include the L cap, which we call the Thought Exchange Web-Based Survey, the Central Unified School District Family School Relations, Relationship Survey, the Emergency Secondary Emergency Relief, SR three, survey secondary school panel input meetings with students and our Superintendent Katty Davis, as well as Fresno PD's data on the number of calls to our middle schools during the 2021, 2022 school year. At this time, I'd like to introduce Deputy Police Chief Mike Reed to also speak on this item.
Green light's on, so we're good. And Board President Solis, members of the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Davis, and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on the benefits of this, or our program. And I'm speaking to you in two realms. First off, as a thirty-year police officer with the city of Fresno in charge of student resource officers for the last twenty years. Also, as a twenty-two-year elected school board member for Crowthers Unified School District, which I currently sit. So I understand the gravity and the significance of this decision, and I appreciate you listening to us. What we're here to do today is reconstitute, basically, a program that we saw a huge amount of success with. In 2018, basically, we got a COPS federal grant, to your question earlier about funding that comes through this, for a very same reason, some school violence issues that were occurring across the nation. If you don't realize it right now, there's twenty-seven school violence incidents this year. Eighty-nine people have been injured or killed during those twenty-seven incidents. What we've seen is a dramatic reduction of those incidents when we have armed, uniformed officers there that do two things. And the primary function is first, is a campus safety approach, which is safety for staff, safety for students. The second thing really is school engagement, and Alicia talked a little bit about that. We have some very good programs. What it's meant to do is build trust between law enforcement and the community. And over the last two years, we've lost some of that. That is our fault, and we're here to reconstitute that. And one of the things that I've seen more often than not that's a success is that relationship that's built by student resource officers and kids at schools. And here's an anecdote that kind of proves that point. Two years ago, we had mass demonstrations in Fresno following the George Floyd incident. What we did was, we, we learned that there were several groups in Fresno that were talking about burning down the city. And those are their words, "We're going to burn down the city." So what we're able to do is talk to those folks, and we're able to coordinate a response where they had an opportunity to voice their, their objections to law enforcement and the government, but do it in a safe way. And what we did was, we took our student resource officers and we put them out front. And we had them connect with those people, the three thousand people in Fresno that marched that day. And what I saw was nothing short of amazing. I saw people coming from that audience. They were advocating killing cops, coming up and hugging those student resource officers. When you see that type of connection at the community level, and you see what that interaction does, then you see the benefit of it. And one of the things that I neglected to do, and I apologize, is failed to introduce my Bureau Commander. That's Tom Rowe. He's a captain of what we call our Police Community Relations Bureau. Underneath that falls our Student Resource Officer Unit. They've done some amazing things. I'm here to talk about, if you'd like. And I can bring Sheila up here, and she can talk about the passion that those folks that we select, and it's a special selection process, to SRO positions have in their heart to do this type of work. So with that, appreciate the opportunity to speak today. If there's any question I can answer, I'd be happy to. And if I can't answer it, that's why I brought those three.
Thank you. Questions or statements by the board? Mr. Mayling?
I have two. Thank you very much for coming and your service. No, I, I think in regards to Rio and L cap, I think they both deserve their own officer. What was the decision, or how was the decision made to split that? I mean, those campuses are, they're pretty far apart. I don't see them getting back and forth relatively quickly.
And I can agree with that point. What happens is a negotiation between law enforcement and Chief Baldurama, who, I apologize, couldn't be here tonight. He's out of the country, as a matter of fact, and also the administration here at Central Unified. And what we look at is our projections for hiring. Our first priority is always providing enough patrol services so that if someone calls 911, we can be there in a short period of time. But what Chief Baldurama was able to do was look and see how many people we have in the pipeline to hire as full-time police officers. And with that hiring effort, and that sustained recruiting effort, we're able to kind of project that we could give you two initially by that August first, at least by the start of the school year, and then add to that. It's not just Central Unified that's asking for SROs at this time. Fresno Unified's asking for a total of fifteen plus one, and we're in negotiations with Sanger Unified right now. So we are trying to accommodate everybody as best we can. We feel that five SROs at the start of the school year will help dramatically with Central Unified's needs. But we can talk about adding that, that third one to this amendment as we look at our projections a little bit more.
Thank you. And the final question, and I'm not sure who this is for. It might be for Jack. Have we taken any consideration into randomly bringing a, a dog into the schools that could either smell for drugs or munitions? And not to say that it needs to be there all the time, but if we did a random deal, has, have you guys thought about that?
Uh, not recently, but I, but I can say in previous years, it's probably seven or eight years ago now, we, we were in partnership with contract with a local vendor who did have trained canines to come on campuses. I think at that time, it was monthly to visit our secondary campuses to do just that.
Is that possible?
It's possible to re-engage with them, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Creo?
I have a couple of questions, but before I begin, I, I just have a couple of comments because I understand that the last time I had questions and comments about this contract, there was some misperceptions. First, I want to thank you guys as our officers for all the work that you're doing within our district, outside of our district, and in our community. And I don't mean any offense by my questions. I want to be very critical. And it's important, as we look around in this room, we have all the adults. And I've heard loud and clear from our district adults, our teachers, our staff, that it makes you feel safer to have police officers. I've heard very little from our students, and so I'd like to hear some of the feedback in the, in the panel discussions because that's my concern. I don't necessarily feel and have heard from students that they feel safer by having a police officer, let alone by having a, a dog sniffing around. But that's for another conversation if that item comes forward. So I'd like to hear what, what the feedback has been from our students. And then you mentioned that you leave the SROs and the training. Can you talk a little bit about what that training looks like and the qualifications? And whether there's been any change in, in the training in the last two years? I know we, we brought this, I had questions last year related to this. And then I do appreciate that our district is being more proactive as how we're dealing with discipline, and that does not go unnoticed. So thank you very much for taking the lead and recognizing that our officers are not our first line of disciplinary measures, but they're there to support and deal when they have to when there's criminal activity. So if maybe we can hear about just some of the qualifications and that process, what that looks like?
Certainly. And let me answer midway in that question first. The changes in law enforcement training have been pretty significant over the last couple of years for a variety of reasons. Most of them are need-based. For instance, our SROs get reconciliation training. And ten years ago, we never even heard of that. So it's really conflict resolution at the ground level, and it's meant to divert people away from the juvenile justice system into something that's a little bit more constructive. The other things that student resource officers have that are regular line officers do. And if you think about the training just to be a law enforcement officer, thousands of hours in the process of either didactic training in a classroom or in a car, learning how to be a police officer, and a prolonged period of probation so we can make sure they're doing the right thing, and then constant evaluation during that entire process. So add that, plus the National Association of School Resource Officers has a forty-hour training that we mandate our folks go to. Those are national best practice standards that we teach those folks. In addition to that, every two years, they have to have perishable skills training, which is de-escalation training, and that's the focus over the last couple of years. But de-escalation, again, is, is conflict resolution. So we send all of our officers through that as well with the SROs. I believe next week or soon thereafter, they're going to go through a gang intervention prevention training with some of the folks and the administrators at Central Unified. And they're also going to do something that's very important. You mentioned the Uvalde incident. We learn from every one of those things that happens, and we dissect it like you wouldn't believe. We're still waiting for a lot of the information to come out, but we've already taken steps internally to look at some of the things that came out early about communication skills, about our interactions with school staff and safety plans, about how we enter a building and whether it's an active shooter or barricaded suspect situation. Those are things that we're in the planning right now. We're going to use role players in that. We're going to pick a school site. And we're going to have administrators, staff also go through that training with us so that we can coordinate the response. Those are lessons that have already been learned from Uvalde, and we're going to try to prevent everything we can from that happening here in Fresno. We've been very, very fortunate, but we need to be better, and that's what we're learning. So the things that have changed mostly is the focus on de-escalation, the lack of the use of force to accomplish the legitimate law enforcement means, and also learning to do conflict resolution at that level and incorporating SROs into that process. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Sergeant Anthony Alvarado apparently thinks I didn't answer that correctly, so.
He just has personal experience to share is what it is, I'm sure.
Right. This is a career move. I just want him to understand that. Okay, go ahead.
It sounds like I'm walking home. So I just wanted to touch a little bit on the training also. They just completed a restorative practice training that went over emotional intelligence and helps to communicate more effectively, identifying issues as far as law enforcement meeting with kids. Some are scared, some are afraid. It lets them kind of get through those barriers, use different tools in their tool bag to get past those students that may be fearful, or anyone that might not want to make initial contact with officers. So once we get past those, those lines, we're able to help out more effectively and efficiently. The other thing too, talking about training with the school staff. The SROs will be giving presentations on the roles and responsibilities of both adults and students on campus during any type of situations that they may need to be protecting themselves. After drills, SROs on campuses are encouraged and have been present, I've been present, when they will debrief with school staff members to go through what they saw that might have been shortcomings or perhaps gaps in safety. So they're able to put at ease some stress some of the teachers are going through. And obviously, we have a lot of adults on these campuses that are trying to take care of our kids. When they go on lockdown, they go through a lot of trauma themselves, and we need to make sure that they're taken care for in that regard. There's also a training scheduled for the end of the summer for a cultural proficiency training where they'll be meeting with different groups to go through and improve cultural awareness and be able to be more effective in that realm also.
Thank you.
Is there, are there any plans as to how frequently that cultural proficiency training is going to be provided?
Right now, it's going to be our first venture into that. It's going to be about thirty-two hours of training that the SROs will go through, four days. And then my expectation will be that we'll, we'll be revisiting that. If we get the approval to move into new sites, there are obviously going to be new officers put in positions where they'll need to go through it as well. So I could foresee us venturing into something like that, or even possibly a more in-depth class to become trainer of trainers, in a sense.
And that's a new training that's being incorporated, right? That, that wasn't something that at least was discussed last year when the item came before the board?
My understanding is that it may have been in the contract or mentioned in some way, shape, or form. My understanding is that it may have been in the contract or mentioned in some way, shape, or form. I've just gotten here in January, but I believe it may have been discussed. But it's something that we have put in place. The officers already go through a cultural awareness type of training, but this is above and beyond.
Thank you.
Mr. Chan?
Sorry, I had, I had some questions for administration. So one of my questions was related to student feedback and input. I know that when we had this contract before, and I was in the minority views as far as having SROs at, at middle schools. One of my specific requests was that we get feedback from our students as to how they feel and what are their requests. Do we have the feedback?
I, I can share from my, I have a middle school, and I see some of our principals have convened a mixed group of students at each of their campuses, both middle school and high school. And in our meeting that we held before spring break, that was the, the topic. It was a lot of the things that were going on associated with safety on campus. And at the middle school specifically, I asked the question, you know, what, what's your feeling in terms of safety and the role of SROs on campus? There was a, a lot of conversation. The most common comment that was made at all campuses was, "We, we don't need them ourselves, but we like having the security of, of law enforcement there on campus if somebody else were to come on or if something else were to happen." I did have a couple of students who, who says, "Ah, we don't need them because they might, you know, might, might be there if we get in trouble," and, and, and certainly didn't feel like they needed to have them. But they had older siblings who had or were at the high school and could share some stories with it. We didn't hear anything in terms of, you know, across the board, you know, "I'm scared," or "I, I don't want them." Some of them didn't know what role they would play, and in some cases, we were talking more about, you know, how can they help, who does go, who, who can provide help? And I'll, I'll be honest, when we talked about that, a lot of the conversation then turned to, "What are the other kinds of help kids need?" And then we went down the lane of mental health. So we didn't stay on it too long, but in every setting, there were students that, that, that shared those views. One of the three campuses across the board had everyone saying that they wanted the support. They didn't have anybody at that campus saying that, that, you know, that there was any concern that they had for it. But I didn't collect from a large sample. It was actually a really healthy conversation with about 10 to 12 students from each of those campuses. At the high school, the conversation, they're used to having their officers, and, and they speak to the types of things that they appreciate from their officers. There wasn't any comment about wanting them removed. So we didn't spend a lot of time at high school, we just, you know, kind of collected that feedback. And Chandler and Luhon, they got a lot of positive press for the kinds of activities and things that they do that have nothing to do with when they get called in for, for a problem. And so that was, that was great to hear, that's what we wanted to hear was, was those positive interactions.
I have a few more questions, but I'll allow other board members, and I'll come back.
Mr. Chan, are you there?
I am. Thank you so much, officers, for sharing, and thank you, President Solis, for giving the opportunity to ask questions. I, I did want to kind of get a little bit more information about the trainings. I know, for instance, I appreciate that we're having the de-escalation training. I, I know NAMI, for instance, has a 40-hour option instead of the standard eight-hour option. I'd like to see in the contract that we, we do sort of the maximal there in, in, in terms of de-escalation training. And I guess the other point, I, I would just like to get a little bit more clarification and potentially add to the contract is more on the, just making sure that we're tracking sort of data and that we're getting potentially to the board or, and double to our administration potentially quarterly reports in terms of what are interactions and the types of interactions and who is being interacted with. I, I, I think sort of my key concerns would be with the contract, just making sure that we're, we're in constant conversation in terms of what the interactions are with our students as well as that we are doing the maximal sort of training for, for de-escalation.
It was my understanding that Police Department obtained a new program to help track the activities that they, they would be providing to us on the contract?
Yes, and actually, we're, we're very happy to say that we have been dialoguing with Fresno PD, with Sergeant Alvarado and, and the officers about the development of these, this tracking program. And we're happy to say that during our meetings, we discussed that they were also collaborating with other districts like Fresno Unified School District to implement a, an application that would be able to disaggregate the data, that would include positive interactions, plus school safety matters, and even their involvement within, assisting with school disciplinary-related issues. I do know that we are going to implement something for sure August. We do have a meeting with the Fresno Unified School District representative, and they have a platform that we're interested in looking at. And we've been talking about the, the, the fact that they just implemented it in March. And if you want to come up here and talk a little bit about where we're going with it, I think it's going to be an incredible thing that we're going to implement come August.
Thank you, that's a really excellent point. For the last 15 years, we've been reporting con, or what we call law enforcement contacts, anytime we have to take a law enforcement action inside the school districts where we're at. So those have been published for the last 15 years. What we found out initially was that we were over enforcing. And so within one semester, we, we dropped that by 80%. And what we did is we gave them different tools to handle some of those situations. Most of them are called a disturbance where a citation would be issued and they're in the juvenile justice system. That was the old way. The new way is that, "Let's diffuse the situation, let's do some reconciliations with that." And so subsequently, we dropped that by 70%. So on our website, you can see that for the last 15 years. What we didn't have a good mechanism for doing, and what we worked with Fresno Unified to do, was those positive contacts that we have with officers and students. And there was no way really to quantify that other than anecdotally. So what we've come up with is an application that we can use at Fresno Unified, and I believe that's what we're talking about here today, is maybe extending that to something Central can use as well. But it, it really does mark those positive, those positive interactions that officers have on a daily basis. And they're in the thousands. If you think about it, 16,500 students maybe in the district, right? Everybody goes to school seven day, or seven hours a day for 180 days, which is under the head code, right? You're talking about 22 million potential hours of contact between law enforcement and our, our students. In that situation, this last semester, what we did was, we looked at it and we said, "There's only 25 times that ended up in a citation of all those contacts." So that means our SROs are understanding de-escalation, they're understanding conflict resolution, they're understanding that reconciliation at a granular level and really applying that with the school district. So we've made some huge inroads on that. But I think this mechanism is going to give us for the first time an ability to quantify those positive contacts that we have every day with hundreds and hundreds of students. And you'll be able to see that report very soon. We're just now at the beginning of generating some data with Fresno Unified and testing that process. We're going to refine it over time, and hopefully, Central Unified will be able to work with Fresno Unified in adopting something that's very similar that works for the district.
But we do have, we do have some data that includes positive interactions. I know Sergeant Alvarado has been in collaboration with our resource officers, and he'd like to say something on that.
Yeah, so the data we have is that for the sites where the SROs are at for Central Unified schools, now this, these contacts are just when they were keeping track of a positive contact that ended in a, in a good manner, good light, right? So 746 total positive contacts have occurred since January, so this spring semester. That doesn't denote necessarily a different individual, it could be someone that they've checked in on, it could be follow-up, it can be just someone that wanted to check back in with the officer. It just kind of depended on the situation, but no matter what it was, the contact that was deemed to be a positive contact was notated by the officer, and that's how we collected that. Now, once we have that data tool in place, we'll be able to track it back to a specific student and see how many they had and how those interactions actually went down. But with those positive contacts, you start looking at how engagement, right? We're engaging with the students and trying to get some, some more prudent decision-making as it goes down so we can reduce the recidivism, recidivism rate. So we're trying to get them in spaces with students, maximize exposure so that the officers can mentor, coach, and try and get them on the track to where they're making better choices at a later date.
Thank you. Do we have any calls holding?
We have no comments by phone at this time.
All righty. Ms. Brooks, do we have anyone wanting to speak in the auditorium? Call the first one?
First, Greg Sullivan?
Anita, while he's coming up, we also lost trustee Chan on phone at 8:41.
At 8:45?
8:41.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Davis and distinguished board members. I had something planned here to speak to tonight. I'm a, I'm an eighth grade science teacher at El Capitan Middle School, and I wanted to speak on the fact that we only getting a halftime SRO at El Capitan and versus a full-time as one of, as the distinguished board member had already mentioned. My argument was for the, for the resource officer, so this has kind of put a hole in this. But what I want to bring up is despite that, our principal, Ms. McCurdy, has done an excellent job this year of monitoring students, especially during our, our breaks and our lunch periods. There's been an enormous amount of fighting and so forth. Seems that the common method for taking care of things is just take care of it yourself rather than the normal methods. I believe in a school resource officer is an avenue for those students to go to and feel like there is something that, that can be done for them. I know that that process is mainly an administrative process, but that, that school resource officer has been very good. We've had, we've had that school resources officers in the past too. But the biggest concern is during October 7th of last year, we had two students who threatened to go ahead and shoot up our school. Now, the administration and, and everybody had taken care of that threat. But what I want to let you know that this is not just, maybe this could happen, this actually did happen at our school and is very much of a concern for all of us at El Capitan. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight, and appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you call the next speaker?
Laura Bolton?
Hello, I'm Laura Bolton. So I'm the Cuda VP, and I hear from, you know, people from all over the district. But some of the things that I've, I've heard tonight and, and the previous board meeting when this came up were concerns about interactions with kids and whether or not training would be appropriate. And a lot of the questions that I had were answered tonight. But one question that I didn't hear anything about was the training that the SROs have for working with kids with disabilities, autistic kids, kids that have mental health issues, specifically those populations that maybe, may not be able to communicate well and may, may not respond to de-escalation tactics as easily. So I'd like to know kind of more about that if there's any way to hear about it, and also make a recommendation. I actually spoke to our cabinet today and kind of briefed this idea. Perhaps we could put forth some sort of a district policy that details what our SROs will do and will not do. To be very clear, so that the public and everyone who, who is aware of the SRO's presence knows what they can be involved in and what they will not be. So for instance, if a student cusses out their teacher, that that will not be a situation that the SRO would be involved in. But if it's a 51-50 where the child is a danger to themselves and others, that maybe they would be, that that would be an appropriate situation. So it's, it's a thought, and I'd like you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you call the next speaker?
Julie Martinez?
Good evening, once again, board trustees, superintendents. I think the letters that you received from our educators at each of our middle schools adequately communicated the need for our school resource officers on our middle school campuses. I would just like to add that all these, all three campuses need their own SROs. While the need may be greater at Glacier Point, there's still a substantial need at Rio Vista and El Capitan. I would like to share just a brief incident to help you understand why. This is written in the first person because this is actually on behalf of a counselor that shared this with me. On the morning the Uvalde shooting took place, I conducted a threat assessment at 8:00 AM regarding a student writing on a vice principal's desk. "You will all bleep die." I requested help from Fresno Police at 8:40 AM and again at 11:30 AM. Site administration was aware, including the principal and area administrator. At 2:30, after the students left for the day and my duty day concluded, I called Fresno Police to update them about the student being home with parent. Fresno Police called me at 9:45 PM and again at 11:45 PM to gather information about my interview and threat assessment and to update me that the student was taken into WIC 51-50, Welfare and Institutions Code 51-50. Because there was no SRO available on campus, the counselor at this middle school had to wait 13 hours to report this information to a trained police officer. This is not acceptable. May I please finish my statement? Okay, thank you.
We have no comments by phone.
Yes, I had a few questions. Okay, so the last time, when we were reviewing the contract in July, and we were notified of the inability, even if, if the board approved having SROs at our middle schools, wasn't feasible. And I know that I advocated, and I believe the board as a whole advocated, what additional services? Can we have a rapport? I know we've, we've approved numerous positions and contracts. Can we just have like a quick summary of the additional services and personnel that we've added to our middle schools related to mental health or psychologists, counselors, to assist both our teachers and our administrators and our students?
I'm speaking from my best memory as, as I, as I do my best attempt to answer that question. But, but yes, we have added staff, we've added mental health staff, and as a matter of fact, we're adding five more intervention counselors prior to the start of this school year to provide support for middle school and elementary schools as well. And if my recollection stands firm, at that time, when we were working with our middle schools to assist them, that we did add, and I don't want to misspeak here, but I, I believe we added school liaison supports to each middle school to assist them with supervision and safety measures and campus security during that time as well. I'll have to double-check. I know we have added school psychologists and speech-language pathologists as well in that course of time, but I, I will need to do some further study to provide you exact numbers on the growth, those growth positions.
Thank you. The only other thing I'll, actually, two more things. So I really like the idea of having a policy that kind of outlines, and I know that this is going to have to be vague and overbroad and all of the legal terms that I typically don't like, so that we incorporate the limitations within the contract, but also that we're constantly updating. So I'd like to, to request if, if there's consensus from the board that we have a policy. I really like a lot of the, the comments and the information that we've received, specifically regarding the training related to de-escalation, the cultural proficiency. Those are really important. And my concern isn't that I don't want police officers at our middle schools. My concern has always been that we need to ensure that you're receiving the appropriate training, and it's not the officer, it's the institution. And so I'm glad that you, that, that the system itself is changing, and I, and I'm glad that we as a district are also improving and that many of our, of our adults are changing their, their, their thought process of ensuring that we're providing services to our students and evaluating. I know that, that these are time-consuming and they're very frightening moments for many of you in having to deal with students that are being disruptive and threatening. So I understand and I hear you. I don't say, I'm not in the classroom, so I can't say that I experienced that, so I really do consider everything that you share. So I would like to see a policy. The other thing is that I want us to continue to advocate, to allocate additional funding and resources to continue to provide that mental health that I really think we need and ensure that we are supporting our resource. and ensure that we are supporting our resource officers so that we, as the adults on campus, as the administrators and as the trustees leading the district, are helping build those positive relationships and kind of change what we've been experiencing, what a lot of our students and community have experienced in the last two years. Because I really do think that they, you have a lot to offer. I always loved my resource officer, but I know that that's not the same experience for all of our students. So, thank you very much, everyone, for all the work that you're doing now, and especially to our law enforcement for really listening to the community and being proactive and making those changes. So, thank you.
Any other questions or statements by the board?
I think I'm going to kind of put SINCAL on the, in the hot seat right here. I think I see Mr. Cerner over there, and I know that that particular agency works very well with a lot of our at-risk students. I'm just kind of curious to see if we would allow him the opportunity to maybe speak on the service officers and the interaction with students, because they're part of that system that actually de-escalates that whole situation in the event that it should occur. I don't know that I'm out of line to ask him if he would be willing to speak on it or a gentleman at the podium. So, thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Randall Cooper, and I'm with Global Impact Services, and we also have SINCAL. We have been working in this for six years. And just some of my background, I was a police officer for 30 years, deputy chief of police in San Jose. Ran, I was a captain in charge of community services. I worked as a police officer on campus for 20 years. And now we started SINCAL mentoring along with Alan Autry, basically to work with the kids, to give them someone they can talk to and listen to. I think we've done an excellent job here in Central. We've taken kids to prisons, male and female, put them in the Grizzly Academy, got them out, turned their lives around. And David has done a tremendous job here in the district. We try to work with the schools and become a part of the team. We want identified youth, not just shotgun it. We're mentoring professionals. We have, what, about 80 hours worth of training every summer on anger management, ACES intervention. We do home visits, and the school district sends us out to work in the homes with the parents as well as the students. We want to work closer with the police department. You know, we've been here, I said, for six years, and we find it, you know, that it's helped. We also went through your suicide training, and we can identify about 12 students we saved. We've had students come to us that won't come to a police officer, and I can speak that from my own personal experience working on the campus. And they told us things, where young ladies have been sexually assaulted or mistreated by family members. They just feel like the main thing they do, we listen. And we truly want to be part of the DNA of a campus. We want the teachers to come to us. We want the administrators to come to us. We know how large of a caseload that the counselors have, and they can't get there. But we're there every day. We're with the kids. We participate with them. We show up to the games. So, you know, again, we don't want to consider ourselves just mentors. We're, you know, we have to have the training to be able to write incident reports when they have situations and turn it over to the schools. The vice principals use us. They send David out to homes when they have issues with parents, because a lot of the parents that we deal with are the same ones that they had problems when they were in school, and now their kids are having those same problems, and they don't want to talk to an administrator. They made it clear to us, you know, they want, you know, they're afraid of school. They consider school a bully, you know? So we feel like we fill that gap, and we're just another service. And in these days and times, you cannot spend enough money on the service you provide your kids with. They need someone to listen to them. They need someone to participate with them, be a part of them. But our goal is also to reach out to the families and make the families feel inclusive. So right now, our anger management, we teach for free here on your campuses. It's accepted by the courts, because some kids have to go through anger management in order to go to school. Every child that goes from Fresno Unified back into their campuses from the court school have to go through our program. So we've been on the juvenile hall campus now for the last, what, 12 years? So we feel like we're a part of this district. We want to be a part of this district. We want to work with these kids. We want to work with the families. We want to work with the police officers and the counselors, just to be another level and another layer. So I'm just going to let David just say a few things about some of the things he does.
To answer your question, trustee Cervantes, I've had personal and great interactions with Officer Richard Luhon on campus, working with kids. He's actually held me on a couple cases, contacted Grizzly Youth Academy to get some kids ahead, to get them, and so do an intervention and things of that sort. With Officer Sheila, Officer, I call them by their names first, sorry, with Officer Todd and SROs. They do great mentoring with kids, working one-on-one. I've seen that firsthand. I think that they have, I've seen, been able to see the training firsthand, that they're not, you know, using force in situations that don't call for that. So that's been a huge plus. I advocate for them being on campus because it does set a perimeter and something for the public to know that, hey, there's somebody here that is armed that will, you know, provide protection. I think the students are aware of that as well. I think the majority of that. I think a lot of the kids that have good intentions on campus, I think they use the SROs to their benefits and into their programs, PAL programs and things like that. But to answer your question, I have seen positive interactions with police in my eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or statements by the board? Hearing none, I have two questions, I guess. One is for the superintendent. Is there any way, while you're developing this policy, that number one, you wrap it into your meetings with the student body of our students and get some input from them? And also, whatever mechanism you want to use within the district to touch bases with our staff to address any concerns they may have or questions they may have as well? With that, I'm going to go ahead and move this item. Unless I hear anything else from the board, it's going to go to action at the next meeting. Is that all right? Okay, it's as action. Thank you to the presenters. Thank you for your time. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M.2, Receive Information Regarding Resolution Number 21/22-53 in the Matter of Calling a Governing Board Member Election. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. Attached is the resolution, as just noted, which must be adopted, executed, and filed with Fresno County Superintendent of Schools no later than July 5th of this year, that identifies the following trustee area seats that are up for election in November. Trustee Area 1 for Jason Paul, trustee Area 2, Yessenia Correa, trustee Area 3, Sean Brooks, and trustee Area 7, Nandip Singh-Chan. So, following the census tracking data was updated this year, our trustee area maps have been updated and are available for review and address lookup on our website. Do recommend this return for action so we can meet the July 5th deadline.
Questions or statements by the board?
Next item on the agenda is M.3, Receive Information on Student Wellness and Support Service Contracts for 2022-2023. Dr. Boatwright.
Good evening, Superintendent Davis, President Solis, and members of the board. Several renewal contracts are being submitted tonight for approval. These contracts support wellness and provide support to students and families. The attached contracts are for SINCAL mentoring, comprehensive youth services, Goalbook, Maxim Healthcare, Orchid Interpreting, Paradigm, School Innovations and Achievement, and the Talk Team. Administration recommends this item be added to the June 28th Agenda for Action, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or statements by the board? Ms. Creel.
Since we have SINCAL representatives, I just want to thank you for all the work that you are providing for our students. I know that there's been a significant change, given the small, although my perspective is still too large, but the smaller number of cases that we're having to hear as a board. So, thank you very much, and thank you for administration for working with SINCAL and supporting our students.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'll go ahead and place this as a consent, on a consent item.
Thank you.
Can you call the next item, Ms. Lopez?
Next item on the agenda is M.4, Receive Information Regarding the 2022-2023 Preliminary Dates for Elementary Schools Attending Sixth Grade Sierra Outdoor School. Dr. Boatwright.
The Sierra Outdoor School is a co-curricular field trip for sixth-grade students that incorporate science standards and character-building activities. As allocated in the El Cap, $10,000 is to be provided for a sixth-grade experience for each school site. Harvest, Liddell, and Saroyan Elementary Schools have reserved dates for sixth-grade students to participate in camp at the Sierra Outdoor School for 2022-2023. Other school sites are currently in the process of developing their plans to provide a sixth-grade experience for their students. Administration is recommending this item be added to the June 28th Agenda for Action.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and place this on consent. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is M.5, Receive Information Regarding Field Trips. Dr. Boatwright.
So requests for overnight field trips and day trips over 150 miles must obtain board approval. There are four overnight field trip requests attached tonight. Administration is recommending this item be added to the June 28th Agenda for Action, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or statements from the board? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and place this on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M.6, Receive Information on Core and Supplemental Materials. Mr. Garrett.
Good evening, President Solis, members of the board, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, for information, I am bringing five instructional materials, including core, supplemental, and one of which is an annual contract renewal. Materials include items to support instruction in high school AP Biology, English 11 for future educators, plant science pathway courses, middle school theater arts, and our multilingual learners K-12. School staff have reviewed all the materials and are recommending their approval. Documentation is attached, and administration is recommending that this item be placed on the June 28th Agenda for Action. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or statements from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and place this on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M.7, Receive Information Regarding 2021-2022 Program Self-Evaluation for California State Preschool Program. Mrs. Hernandez and Dr. Boatwright.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Davis. The California State Preschool Program Self-Evaluation is completed annually and submitted to the California Department of Education. And this year, it is gathered, the data is gathered from information from all five preschool sites to determine areas of strength and areas to grow for the coming year. All five of our preschool sites have met the criteria for program effectiveness based on the DRDP, Desired Results Developmental Profile Summary of Findings data. Goals are set for the next year in the area of phonological awareness, reading comprehension, and number sense to increase levels to higher levels. Professional development, child-staff interaction, observations, and classroom resources and materials will be determined with these goals in mind for 2023, or, I'm sorry, 2022-23. Administration is recommending the board approve the preschool program self-evaluation.
Thank you. Any questions or statements by the board? Ms. Davis, is this an information-only item?
Yes, it is. It just requires that it be presented to you so that she can certify that to the state.
So do we, are we required to take a vote on it? No.
Just receive it.
All righty then. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M.8, Receive Information Regarding 2022-2023 District Title 1 Parent Engagement Policy. Mrs. Grigsby.
Good evening again. Under every Student Succeeds Act, which is also known as ESSA legislation, which is federal guidance, and in accordance with our own board policy 6020, the district must have a board-approved Title 1 Parent Engagement Policy for every school year. The policy is developed in collaboration with the parents of Title 1 students and reviewed on an annual basis. We review the policy with our parent advisory team, which is the school site council parents that are elected to serve on a district level, the district English learner advisory committee, and the migrant parent advisory committee, all at the district level. All of those groups met together with us in May of 2022, and they participated in an annual review, comment, and update of our policy. We're recommending that this item be placed on the June 28th Board Agenda for Action.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or statements by the board? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and place this on consent. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item is M.9, Receive Information on Reclassification Criteria for English Learners. Mrs. Grigsby.
Thank you. As we know, reclassification is the process whereby a student exits from English learner programs' status to Fluent English Proficient or ARFEP status. Reclassification can take place at any time during the year, and we do encourage that as soon as a student qualifies, they are reclassified. But the district does have two calendared windows where we run filtered reports to help the sites know which students have met the preliminary filter criteria, and then they look at them more closely to reclassify them. This criteria is defined under ED Code 313, and we are just bringing it to you to update some of the language from the previously approved master plan for English learners, where we actually delineated what local assessment or local measures we would use, because what we're finding is that there are lots of different tests at different grade levels. And we are also streamlining it to only require one local measure as one of the criterion for reclassification instead of multiple measures.
Thank you. Any questions or statements by the board? Ms. Creel.
Thank you. I'm excited to see the impact that this policy will have on our students, because I know I've had discussions about this with Superintendent Davis, so again, thank you.
We're excited as well.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Consent? Okay, consent it is. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M.10, Receive Information Regarding a Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution Number 21/22-57 Statutory Level 1 School Facilities Developer Fees. Mr. McLean.
Tonight before you is information regarding level 1 fees, and I'll just give a little refresher here. Each year, we bring forward developer fees for the board's consideration. For the past quite a few years, we've been under level 2 fees, but with the opening of Justin Garza, it changes the calculations and to now we're back to level 1 fees. So level 1 is kind of a base rate of developer fees. It's a statutory rate, so it's statewide. It doesn't vary from district to district. And so that rate is set by the state allocation board every two years, and they just did this in February. Level 2 fees, which we were under previously, are unique to each district and vary from year to year. So we are in level 1 at this point, and those fees are coming forward as $4.79, which is an increase, which again is based just on calculations set by the state allocation board. And so we are recommending that this item be placed on the next board agenda on June 28th. we are recommending that this item be placed on the next board agenda on June 28th for a public hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to mention one more thing. We did do a comparison with other districts in our area. Quite a few of the districts that are medium to larger size are under level 1, which means we're all at this $4.79 rate, and other districts are taking their rates forward at this time as well. There are a few that are under level 2. Clovis, for example, is at a level 2, $5.36 rate, Dinuba at $6.63. Those are both level 2 rates. But again, we're at level 1 at this point, and these are the funds that do help us to pay for our new schools along with our Measure D funds and our state matching funds. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or statements by the board? Mr. Maylie.
Thank you. Steve, how much additional revenue is that going to bring us, ballpark number?
Depending on development from year to year, and we're seeing quite a bit in our district, as you know, I think we're running around $2 million a year. The rate that we're going to be under level 1 is actually much closer to level 2 than in the past, just because of the increases that are coming on level 1 fees. So, there's not a significant difference in terms of the rates.
Do you think this is going to discourage anybody from building?
We actually invite our, as a practice, we invited our developers to a meeting here recently, and so we allowed them to come in. We answered questions and met with them. Our facilities director, Joseph Martinez, was there, as well as our consultants, who helped us with the calculations. And so, we had two of our larger developers there and answered questions from them, but there were no issues. So, they understand that this is part of building houses in areas where there are schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Then I'll go ahead and place this on action to be scheduled to have a public hearing.
That's correct.
Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item, please?
Next item on the agenda is M11, Receive Information Regarding Annual Authorization to Purchase via Piggyback Cooperative Purchasing Contracts, Mr. McLean.
Yeah, so this is an annual item that is an authorization for using cooperative purchasing contracts in other piggybacking districts, and you'll see us do that throughout the year. We do some of our own bidding, as you know, but with the number of contracts that we have, and to be effective and efficient in our time, we do utilize these piggyback contracts, which allow us to get good competitive-priced contracts for our district. So, this would be recommended to be placed on the June 28th Board Agenda Item for Action. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or statements by the board? Mr. Cervantes?
Nope.
All righty. I'll go ahead and place this as consent. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M12, Receive Information Regarding Renewal of Security Monitoring Services with Sonatrol, Mr. McLean.
Thank you. This is our renewal agreement with Sonatrol. They do our security monitoring, and the recommendation is before the board as an info item. We were able to hold the rates with Sonatrol, so the only difference being that we have added, of course, this year, we added Justin Garza in this past year, and we had services for the online homeschool over at the Tully Campus. So, a few additions in terms of coverage, but other than that, the pricing is the same. So, we recommend this item be placed on June 28th Board Agenda, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions or statements by the board? Mr. Cervantes.
Thank you, Board Chair. I just wanted to make sure there was no rate increase?
No what? I'm sorry.
No rate increase?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. I'll go ahead and place it on consent. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M13, Receive Information Regarding Piggyback Contract with Eagle Shield Pest Control Incorporated, Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So, here is an example of one of our piggyback contracts, which is using a Fresno Unified contract that was awarded in 2021. What this does is provide comprehensive services through Eagle Shield Pest Control to service all of our school buildings, our food service areas, and most significantly, what we're adding here to the mix going forward is to provide ongoing rodent control on our athletic fields. That's been an issue for our, well, many of our schools, in terms of just controlling those populations. And so, this will allow us to have a proactive approach to servicing and keeping our fields safe for our students. So, recommending that this item be placed on the next Board Agenda for Action, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and place it on consent. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
The last item on information is M14, Receive Information Regarding Resolution 21/22-58, Approving Grant Agreement for Cal-Shape Plumbing Program, Mr. McLean.
Thank you. This is a grant that was made available here a few months ago from the state to replace plumbing fixtures with more efficient fixtures, and it was prioritized for schools that had disadvantaged populations. And so, we applied for several of our schools, and we're awarded grants in the amount of $94,900 to be used for six of our schools. And this would allow us to replace these fixtures, such as flush valves and things like that. Recommending this item be placed on the June 28th Board Agenda, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Ms. Correa.
Does that money need to be used equally amongst all of the campuses, or is that going to depend on the needs of each one?
It's based on the needs of each one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And what's the pleasure of the board? Consent? Okay, I'll place it on consent.
Thank you.
Item N is Advanced Planning. Ms. Davis?
This will cover us through the end of June, which is the next meeting, and then we'll provide for you an updated one for next school year with our events on it.
Anything under O, additional information or closing comments? Go ahead.
I just have one, and I can see her on the other side of the camera. I'd love to introduce our new area administrator, Christine Hawkins-Pennington, if she can stand up. Congratulations. And you made a great call. You're already here tonight listening, so thank you.
Let's see where we're at. Any comments by any board members? Nothing to share. All right. Next meeting will be June 28th, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Correa. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brooks. All those, oh, roll call vote.
No, we don't have anyone on the line.
Not on the agenda? Okay, great. All those in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Have a nice evening, folks.
Thank you.